Ed is in a margarita with a little umbrella. Yeah, you're good to go.
I'll be right back. It's a good idea. Counselor, how do you feel?
Well, doing I'm not.
Natasha.
I feel great. Yes. Thank you for asking.
That's Dan.
Oh, he's he's back to his normal self.
I can verify that. I was just there.
Is that good or bad?
It's wonderful.
My goodness.
Good afternoon, folks.
How you doing, Mark?
Hey, Deidre.
Still trying to get used to these snow line bifocals.
Oh, you'll get used to them, you little young fella.
Is it me or we have a delay?
Tell you what, good or not, it's not for the thing to heart, that's for sure.
No, it is not.
After you make a few missteps, you'll get used to them.
The hard way.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hey, Michael.
Hey, Michael.
Hello, hello.
Good afternoon. We'll get started here in a few minutes.
Hey, doing pretty good. Just lay there.
Mr. Williams, Dr. Williams.
How are you?
I am doing good. It's been.
Yes, congratulations, sir.
Sir, I was thinking about that a couple of weeks ago. Since we passed in one of our old classmates, they're posting out of old football pictures. And actor, and there you were.
Don't forget about me, man. Now, now that you're ready to the top, man, don't forget about the little.
It was, uh, it was going down memory lane and had to serve as a whole bunch of patients from experts. Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Do we have everyone?
I think so. Scott, can I ask a real quick question, sir, before we start? Norma, can you mute in everyone?
Yeah, there's a lot of background noise.
There is.
Yes, since Randy is hosting, she can mute everyone.
There you go. That, well, there we go.
Do you wanna, do you want us to mute too and just unmute when we're talking?
Yes, that probably help. It helped last time. There we go. It's getting there. Okay, I'm gonna call this to order. Of the Odessa City Council Work Session Legitnum. Uh, it's being Tuesday, February 2nd, year 2021. It is 3:01 PM. Uh, I will start with invocation. Everyone can bow your heads for a moment. Love and Heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we gather together. We pray for guidance to the matters at hand and ask you that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work. And all the God's children respond by saying, amen. Uh, we're gonna start with item one. Discussion Regarding Payroll Protection Program with Representative from Frost Bank, uh, Crystal Viegas. Ms. Viegas, if you're on, on with us.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council Members. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of Frost Bank regarding the Paycheck Protection Program, also known as PPP. Uh, my name is Crystal Viegas and I'm a commercial lender with Frost Bank and working with my fellow team members on the Paycheck Protection Program applications. Um, so we wanted to just kinda inform everybody a little bit what PPP is, who can qualify, and what are the steps in order to go ahead and submit application for our, you know, local community business owners. As we know, we've all been impacted by this, and so we want to be able to help all of the businesses, um, to bring in every dollar we can supporting our community. Um, so I'm gonna start off a little bit, what is PPP? So PPP provides loans to businesses to keep their workforce employed during this COVID-19 crisis. So, working with the government and with the Small Business Association, um, they created everything under the CARES Act, and so there are individuals or businesses that can qualify for the first draw for PPP loans, um, and also the second draws. So, nobody, um, does not have the means to where they cannot see if they can qualify for this program. Two hundred and eighty-four billion has been allocated for this program. Um, and so the requirements of some of the qualifications, um, entities can be eligible such as your self-proprietors, your independent contractors, um, self-employed, uh, individuals, partnership, any of those type of entities. Um, and any small business concerns that meet SBA standards. Um, there are some requirements. Um, you know, they, they're not able to have any type of bankruptcies, um, different guidelines like that that's provided under the SBA rules. Um, this second round also does include the opportunity for our nonprofit organizations, veteran organizations, um, that can apply this, the second round. So that does help with the, the chambers who can apply for those now currently. Um, one of the big, um, requirements was that businesses must show that there was a 25% reduction in gross receipts. Um, so they do have to show in comparison to a quarter. For example, if it was 2019 quarter two compared to 2000 quarter two for 2020, they had to show the reduction in gross receipts. Um, and so that will be something that can be required beforehand before the application is approved or afterwards when the individual applies for loan forgiveness. Um, some of the background loan details as far as what could be required, this is a loan, um, when you receive the funds, but it can be turned into a grant upon, uh, applying for forgiveness. In the event that the individual or the borrower can, the loan cannot be forgiven, the PPP loan has an interest rate of 1%. It's set up on a five-year maturity, and for a period of time, the loan, um, can be deferred before any payments would be, um, allowed to start being, uh, approved at that time. There are no type of collateral or personal guarantees with this loan. Um, and neither the government or the lenders are charging any small businesses any fees or anything upfront. So that is dictated under the SBA CARES Act. Um, the deadline to apply for this loan is March 31st, 2021, or until the funds, um, are no longer available prior to this date. Um, so we encourage everybody, you know, that's been thinking about it, you know, to go ahead and, you know, contact their local financial institution to see what is the process for accepting applications. Um, I know that there are some financial institutions that are not participating, and there are some that are participating. So, we can advise them to, um, visit the sba.gov to see which lender could be participating in this. So, um, and many of the lenders right now do have it to where they're accepting applications through the online portal or by paper applications. It just depends on that institution. Um, and there are two different applications, um, if you're applying for the first time versus if you're applying for the second time. It just depends on the scenario for the customer. Um, so when the individual starts speaking to their bank, they wanna inquire what documents are required to accompany the applications, uh, for the PPP application. Um, and so the SBA has also determined, and this is something that I believe we all kinda speak about before, um, identifying that our minority and our low-income servers have been underserved. And so they did allocate, um, a percentage of, of the dollars, um, to be allocated to those individuals in our community. And I think we can all say that we're all on the same page saying we wanna make sure that we can support our community and bring in every dollar that we can, um, in this community.
Okay, we got.
Thank you, City Council, for all of your efforts with the city supplement that y'all provided before. Um, and if y'all have any questions regarding this, um, like I said, you can feel free to give me a call directly. My phone number is 432-617-1319. Um, and again, I'm with Frost Bank, and we are continuing to assist lenders with their PPP applications in the community. Thank you for your time.
Can anybody hear me? There you are.
Go ahead, Mark.
Uh, did you say there's 284 million allocated for these?
Hundred and eighty-four billion that has been allocated for the PPP program.
Crystal, this is, uh, Michael Moretto, Senior Manager for the City of Odessa. Uh, thank you for your time and thank you for the information, um, that you, you shared with us. You may have mentioned this, um, earlier, but, uh, one of the reasons the city implemented its own program is because some underserved and/or micro businesses were not able to, uh, access the PPP program. Have those requirements, uh, been significantly tweaked since the first round of, of PPP loans?
Um, no, sir. I wouldn't say that there's a big change with that. Um, you, you know, if they, individuals, if they had a net income, um, you needed to make sure that there was not a net loss. They needed to make sure that they did have employees paying those wages. Um, I think there was a lot of confusion. Um, for instance, if you owned a trucking company as an example, and I paid individuals by 1099s, um, that disqualified them from including those individuals that were receiving 1099s. Um, and I think that's a lot, um, that wasn't, um, out there and clear for them. But those individuals that, uh, received 1099s, they have the opportunity to apply for their own PPP loan. Um, but I wouldn't say there's been a significant change with the guidelines.
And the information, uh, is, is it available in Spanish as well?
Yes, on the sba.gov website, you can visit the website, and they have the applications and in the information in Spanish.
Thank you, Ms. Viegas.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any more questions, uh, or comments, uh, for Ms. Viegas? Okay, thank you, Ms. Viegas. Thank you for that time and that information.
Mayor, if I may ask, for the record, is Councilmember Thompson?
I'm sorry, say, say that again.
Is Councilmember Thompson at this meeting, for the record?
Uh, no.
Thank you.
Is that correct? Yeah, that's correct, isn't it? Uh, Mr. Thompson still not made it back?
I do not believe he's on the call today, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, okay, so we're on to item two, Consider Award of Contract for 2021 HA5 High. I am going to butcher it. Is it a Irvin, Irvent?
Yes, that's correct. Good afternoon, uh, Mayor and the Mayor Council. For those of you that I haven't met, my name is Yervon Tamaikan. I'm the City Engineer with the Public Works Department, and I look forward to working.
Yes, sir.
This item is, uh, to consider award of contract for high-density mineral bond pavement surface treatment. The Public Works Division is planning to use high-density mineral bond pavement surface treatment for a portion of the preventive maintenance program as a pilot project for this, for the first time. And this product is approximately $3 per square yard and offers a good service life. It is designed to be applied to low-volume streets, and our intent to use it on many of the streets that have not been sealed coated, or have not been sealed in several years. The purpose of this project is to seal approximately 82,000 square yards of residential streets, which is approximately 3.7 linear miles. And we have weakness Midland using this product from 2017 through 2020. And this year, they are expanding the application to approximately 636,000 square yards. Uh, the contract provides a turnkey project and handle construction incorporated from Jordan and Texas is so, is the sole provider of the high-density mineral bond material in the state of Texas, and the contract amount is 252,641 dollars and 49 cents. I'll be happy to answer to your questions.
Uh, does Council have any comments or questions? I have a question, Yervon.
Yes.
Uh, this Tom Spraw. In looking at this map of the job locations, these are all existing streets, right?
That's correct, yes.
And is 100th Street, the east side of 100th Street that it's showing that we're, we're going to do this improvement on? Uh, that street can't be that old. You know, I can't believe it's that worn yet. What, what, what street is that? What street is that, Tom? When, when you look at the map,
Yes.
The, the top job location is 100th Street.
Mm-hmm.
And I didn't, first of all, I didn't even know it was paved that far out to the loop.
It is not to the loop. There is a missing section, Mr. Spraw. It is not. It starts short from the loop. It is not all the way to the loop yet, but it is going.
How old is that street?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
How old is that street?
It is, it is at least five years old, and this material is designed to be applied at early stages, like two to five years to prevent that pavement from, uh, heavy oxidation.
Okay.
That can last long.
I, I'm just surprised that, that street even needs anything yet, but because it can't be that old.
Councilman Spraw.
Yes.
This Tom Kerr. Um, yes, sir. Uh, part of the, uh, process on, on what we're seeing with our maintenance is that, um, if, if you treat streets a little sooner with some lighter maintenance, then, uh, the proponent, the proponent in this case advises that you should get a lot more wear out of that street before you need to start to treat it again, say with steel coat and, uh, and things like that. Um, so we're trying some newer streets in this project, as well as some older streets to see if it, if it helps much with the older streets. Um, and so it's, uh, but it's first focus, they say, is for lighter maintenance streets. This is kind of a pilot program for us, although Midland's been doing it.
Is this similar to what, is this similar to what you did here in, uh, in, right, uh, for?
They are not the same. That's why we're trying to see which one works.
Okay. That's my question. Uh, does Council have any more questions? Any more questions? Statements? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to item three. Consider Economic Development between Odessa, uh, ODC and Odessa College Foundation. Mr. Burnett?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, I know Randy's gonna put up the, uh, renderings of this project, but, uh, wanted to give you the basic details. I know it was in your packet. Uh, but the Compliance Committee accepted an application from, uh, Odessa College on this project for, uh, an 83,000-square-foot, uh, health sciences building, uh, with about a $39.7 million capital expenditure on that. Uh, we look at the job, jobs retained and the job creation, but also the workforce training aspect for the nurses and the different medical fields. That'll be, uh, benefiting from this, uh, this project, and obviously our overall economy on that sector, uh, can use those. There's quite a shortage, shortage of those, but, as the information mentions, Compliance Committee took the application, reviewed it thoroughly. Uh, there's 44 jobs retained and 16 new jobs created, and a little over a million dollars in additional payroll. Uh, 440 student completions each semester, which is key for the job training aspect of this. Uh, the Compliance Committee recommended to the ODC, uh, five ma-, uh, $5 million grant over five years. Uh, we have done other projects with Odessa College for workforce training. It fit in line with that. Uh, and they did approve that at their January meeting. I know this meeting is for questions and answers, and, uh, it's up for your uh, ultimate review and, uh, vote at the Jan-, at the February 9th meeting. So, just here to answer questions and appreciate the time that you've given us. I know Dr. Williams and his team are on the, uh, WebEx here and have renderings, and probably would like to share some more information with you. So, I'll be happy to answer any ODC-related or how the process worked questions, but, uh, if you'll allow me to flip this over to Dr. Williams and his team to, to go over this with you, I'd appreciate it.
Dr. Williams?
Mr. Mayor, uh, council members, thank you all for considering, uh, Odessa College and ODC's, uh, recommendation, uh, today. Uh, we're, we're proud to be here before you, uh, the support for a roughly $40 million project that will not only create jobs immediately, but will also produce, uh, a record number of students working in the health sciences field. Uh, we're, we're excited about it. We think it'll add uh, additional life to the entire Permian Basin from a medical, uh, standpoint. Uh, we think it'll save a lot of dollars. We, we have a number of, uh, community members who are very supportive. The Wood family has joined us, uh, with a tremendous donation. Medical Center Hospital is on board. We'll have, uh, other hospitals. We'll have other, uh, individuals involved as well. But we're, we're excited about this. We think it continues to move Odessa and the Permian Basin forward. We'll answer any questions that you all might have.
I have a question. Where is this facility?
Anybody from the council have questions? Go ahead, Deidre. Go ahead, Deidre. Go ahead.
Uh, where is this facility to be located?
It will be located in the location where, uh, Travis Hall exists currently.
Oh, okay.
It will face a university.
Okay.
Dr. Williams, when, uh, are you taking the big ground again? I know you put it on there. There we go.
Mr. Mayor, our goal.
He gives a conceptual floor plan here.
Our goal is to break ground in the fall.
Okay. And we're talking about a three-year project?
Yes.
Uh, where, where are you at? I mean, I think you have a preliminary budget of 39 million. Am, am I correct on that?
Thirty-nine point seven, but it's, yeah, it, we, it's, we, I'm rounding. It's a $40 million project.
Okay, so where are you at right now with the contributions of the Wood family, city, and, uh, and, and, and the hospital?
We're sitting between those three. Odessa College coming in at 14 million. We're sitting at 29 million. And we have other donors who are coming in soon. So we're about $11 million away, and we think we'll get there in the next three or four months.
Uh, any more questions, uh, Mr. Burnett, Dr. Williams? Looks awesome. Can't wait to break the ground, get forward, and start providing, uh, an additional need that we have in this community.
Yeah, looks good.
Thank you all for your support.
Thank you for.
Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, we're gonna move on to item four. Uh, consider amending the, uh, 2020-21 budget for, uh, appropriating additional 102,536, uh, thousand and ninety-two cents for the cost of the general election and runoff election. Ms. Grimaldo?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Back in the spring of 2020, the election forecast had an increase from the 2018 election. The budget provided for an increase using the 2019 cost. Unfortunately, the election cost far exceeded the budgeted amount. The election cost with Hector County was a 50% cost split. The election with Midland County was a part cost among four other entities. As you can see there, I itemized the diff-, the election costs by the counties and then the always the public notice that we had to, uh, publish in the newspaper. The election cost for the general November 3rd election had a total cost of 114,946 dollars and 28 cents. The cost for the runoff December 15th election was 77,590 and 64 cents, which brings a total cost of both elections to 192,536 dollars and 92 cents. The budgeted amount for the general election was 65,000, and there was an appropriation in November of 25,000 for the runoff election. There was a significant amount of increased costs due to the rising cost of holding elections. Also, in 2018, with Hector County, the cost was split by three entities. In 2020, it was just split by two entities. Other factors included an additional four days of early voting ordered by Governor Abbott, additional COVID personnel for each vote center to cling the booths, COVID kit costs, and the number of machines was higher due to a higher expected amount of voter turnout. The pandemic also resulted with a higher number of mail ballots requests that were mailed, which caused more printed ballots and an increase of postage. The cost exceeded the budgeted amount by 102,536 dollars and 92 cents. The budget amendment would appropriate that amount from the general fund to pay for the elections. Lisa, Elections Administrator is in attendance, and we would be happy to answer any questions.
I, I have a question, and I think you, I, I, I lost you there, Ms. Grimaldo. Uh, with, did, did you give a number per cost per mail-in ballot?
Not a total number, no.
Okay. I guess we can get that in another day.
Yes.
Uh, did you say, uh, Lisa, Lisa's online?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I have a question. Um, let, let me ask this question. Um, was there an increase? I mean, what, we saw an increase, we, even though we had, we had what, four, total of four weeks or five weeks in the general election, being early and, and election day? Uh, we, we had a, was it additional four days or five days?
Four days with a total of 16 days of early voting.
How many locations that we have in Midland County that, uh, that, uh, uh, Midland, Midland County City of Odessa residents, uh, were afforded to them in Midland County?
There are also vote centers, so they can vote anywhere in Midland County. I would have to.
Okay.
That number of vote centers for early voting.
Okay.
Questions for the mail ballot? A 3,225 mail ballots were requested.
In the general election?
In the general.
General election.
That's for Hector County only.
Then we, and then we had an addi-, what was the addi-, you have the number and the additional for, uh, the runoff? Is it 900?
I'm sorry, one more time? Could you please repeat that?
Uh, what were the, what, what was, what was the, uh, the, uh, the, the additional mail-in ballots, uh, in the runoff? Was that a, a little over 900? 100? I can't recall.
I don't think it's separated. It's just a total. It's just, it shows a total mail. It doesn't.
Okay. Okay. Um, let me, let me ask this question. Is it a possibility that we got a low number? Uh, when we, uh, you budgeted this back in what, uh, May of 2020?
Yes, April, May.
So, is it, it's a possibility that we wind up getting a low, a, a, a low bid, a low, uh, bid back in May and then, uh, anticipate the rising cost and the, well, nobody anticipated the additional days that the governor was going to place, and, and nobody foresaw a, uh, a runoff. But is it a possibility, look at the cost in Hector County, Midland County, there's a possibility that we got a low number to begin with when we did the, the bid, when we sent out for the, uh, for, and we originally budgeted, uh, it basically is a contributing factor to, it's not so much it was a, a, a huge increase, but the thing is that, that we start off with a, a, a low amount and then anticipate there was gonna be a higher cost.
Correct.
It, it, it's minus, because I mean, it's a huge, it's a huge chunk. Yeah, okay. Does anybody have any other questions or comments? It was expensive. Council, does anybody have any more, uh, comments or, or questions? Council, does anybody have any more, uh, comments or, or questions from Grimaldo?
I guess the, uh, the voter turnout was.
Yes, go ahead, Mark.
The, the turnout was going to be more just because it was a presidential election than he. I wonder, was that taken into consideration whenever we got the, uh, original bid request for this? But, because it is a huge, huge amount to, uh, that went over. I wonder, or was it just, because we had more than just the local city elections going on. It was, it's always going to be a lot higher voter turnout. I don't know if it makes a difference or not, but.
That was considered, yes, it was a presidential election here, but also we didn't know how many entities that were going to participate in the November election. And, uh, that was partly the huge difference. In two thousand and eighteen, there was three entities that split the cost, and this, last year, it was just us two, county and city.
Okay. Thanks, Norman.
Any more ca- I mean, uh, any more comments or questions for, uh, Ms. Grimaldo? Thank you, ma'am. Uh, we're going to move to item five. Consider a resolution of support for an application of the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for the twenty-twenty-one competitive nine, uh, percent housing tax credit. This would be for Woodcrest Apartments, uh, City Manager, Mr. Marrero.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, the item that I wish to discuss with you this afternoon uh, is a request from, um, Rise Residential Construction, who plans to submit a, um, a application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for what's called a nine percent at-risk, uh, tax credit. Uh, their proposal is to take the existing, um, the exist- the existing site and, um, and, and, and I, I hope everybody can see that map. Can you see the map?
There we go.
Yes.
I can see that.
Yes.
Some of you or all of you should be familiar with the location. It's right off of Harless and Eight. This is the existing Woodcrest Apartments. And the, uh.
Okay.
Maybe on the, the consultant, rather, for the, uh, for the developer may be online, and he may want to add. But essentially, uh, the proposal is, uh, to apply for a tax credit that, that would then allow the developer to, uh, take this property, move all of the existing residents to other units, uh, throughout the community, and then demolish the existing structure. Those existing structures that are there are over fifty years old. Uh, they are, uh, approximately seventy-four units located on this site. They will be then replaced with forty, uh, seventy-four brand-new units that will be, uh, constructed through the, uh, the TDHCA Tax Credit Program. Uh, the, um, those individuals that currently reside in this, uh, this property, as I mentioned, will be relocated. The cost of that relocation, uh, will be borne by the contractor, whoever wins this, this, rather, the contractor in this case. Uh, when the, uh, project is complete, uh, the contractor will also be responsible for moving those, those individuals back in. This has what's called an existing HUD HAP contract on it. HAP means Housing Assistance Program, so all of these units are currently subsidized by the Housing Department, uh, the, the US Department of Housing and Urban, uh, Urban Development. Uh, those will continue. Um, the, uh, HAP contract as part of this redevelopment will be, uh, extended. So we'll continue to have this sort of affordable housing, uh, for, uh, at least the near term. Uh, Mr. Fisher, are you online by any chance? All right. I, I'd sent the, um, the invitation to the, uh, consultant on this.
Yes, I'm, I'm, this is Bill Fisher. I'm on the line. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Bill, um.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I, I gave a, I gave a brief synopsis, but if you want to provide more detail to the council that will help them, uh, decide whether or not they would like to support this project.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Mayor, council members, Bill Fisher with Sonoma Housing. I'm the advisor to Rise Presidential, who helps them arrange these financings that allow them to acquire these types of properties and redevelop them. Our objective is, uh, pretty much threefold. Number one, it is to take a very old building that is, has very little, uh, ability to be code-compliant, energy-efficient, water-efficient, and replace it with something brand-new, code-compliant, energy-efficient, water, uh, efficient, uh, for the benefit of the residents long-term. These, uh, this rental subsidy, uh, comes directly from Washington. It does not interfere or encroach on any local resources at all. Uh, these contracts cannot be anything other than renewed and extended. So if you went back twenty-five years, there were three million of these units, um, across the United States. Today, there's, uh, less than nine hundred thousand. Um, so one of the objectives, uh, is to extend the rental subsidy for the benefit of low-income families in the Odessa community. Uh, right now, the rental subsidy contract expires in the next, uh, twenty-four months. I certainly don't want to imply to the council that HUD would not intend on renewing the contract. They would. They just would not do it long-term, so that the residents would remain at risk, uh, given the physical condition of the building, because at some point, they will cease rental assistance when the property just gets too old or too costly to operate. The other significant benefit, um, obviously, is the, uh, neighbors and the neighboring communities, um, around us gets a brand-new property. Uh, gives us a chance to, uh, provide additional amenities for the residents, provide a clubhouse, and most importantly, provide a modern look that is consistent with current Odessa building standards and codes. So there's a unique opportunity here to have TDHCA provide funding to us to bring those resources to Odessa, which would facilitate a temporary relocation of the residents in the community at our expense, which would allow us to demolish these buildings and, subject to an approved site plan and building plans, uh, through your normal processes, to rebuild a brand-new housing community in that location, same number of units, same, uh, types of units. So our floor plan types will not change. The new floor plans, obviously, will be much larger than they are, which is, which is current standard. You know, the objective long-term is to keep a rental subsidy that comes from Washington to Odessa at this point that helps you serve, uh, low- and moderate-income residents in your community. Um, the application, uh, process with TDHCA, uh, to, for all practical purposes, to win the funding, requires a resolution of support, uh, from the city council. That's why we're before you. Uh, the good thing is, there's also a pre-application round, and if you were to go out on the TDHCA website, we fall under a specific set aside, an at-risk set aside, and those are properties that are at risk of losing this type of rental subsidy. The state legislature has prioritized these for many years. Uh, these resources come to this particular set aside first before they go anywhere else. And at this point in time, Woodcrest is the highest-scoring application in the state. So a- as we, as you consider us for an up or down on the ninth, you would know that, uh, for most likelihood, if you did support the application, we would receive funding that would be sufficient to allow the property to be demolished and rebuilt. Uh, I do want to, uh, make sure you understand that these residents are protected by state law as well as the Federal Relocation Act, which requires us to work closely with the residents to minimize their displacement and bear all the costs associated with that. They will not lose their rental subsidy while they are living on other apartments. Um, what happens is HUD passes the rent that's currently being paid to the, or owner through to the residents and where they live, so that they continue to enjoy, um, the, the support that they need in order to stay in a, in a, uh, in their home. And we certainly ask you, uh, respectfully request that you support, uh, the development and allow us to acquire the property and proceed with redevelopment, uh, which would start in the, uh, fall of this year.
Bill, can you tell the council, uh, the construction time that would be associated with this, as well as the, uh, dollar amount invested in the project?
It's a, it's approximately a fourteen-million-dollar development, and the construction timeline is going to be twelve to fourteen months. Um, what we try to do is be as ready as we can before the first resident moves. Uh, the construction, demolition and construction would start right away. We'd expect to have, uh, families, subject to the approval of the Fire Marshal, the Building Inspector, moving back into finished buildings, certainly within nine or ten months. The entire development would not be done for twelve to fourteen, but the twelve to fourteen period is where, the period where we would finish the swimming pool, the clubhouse, the, uh, playground equipment would be installed. Our primary objective would be to replace the living units as quickly as possible and get these families, uh, back relocated where they've lived for many, many years.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks. Uh, does the council have any questions or comments?
I'd just like to point out another thing, and I, I don't think you mentioned it, um, if so, I missed it. But as this, as this, uh, if approved and as this, uh, procedure can, starts, the residents, current residents will be involved. They'll have meetings with them. They won't just, you know, come in and tomorrow you have to be gone. There is a process where the residents know what's coming up and, you know, will have some input. Um, and I think that's important to have that buy-in. Um, he also mentioned, when we talked, that occasionally, there will be those who will move in with, uh, will have to move in with family members possibly, and there is a mechanism where the, um, where this company will pay for the storage of their current furniture, you know, as needed. And so they, they appear to take really good care of the current residents.
That, that, that is all correct. The residents, we, we.
How many residents? Go ahead.
There's, there's seventy-four households that live there now.
Okay.
As you might imagine, this property's al- always full. HUD pays, on average, two-thirds of the total rent that's collected on the property, which means many of these families are literally, it's paying all of their rent in order to have a place to live. It's part of the safety net that we offer to low- and moderate-income families. Many of our residents are elderly or disabled, but that's, that's who we serve.
Bill, how do these projects like this, you, you mentioned the de- decrease in the HUD project. What causes them to fold?
They're in locations, uh, or markets where the owner opts to sell to someone who redevelops the property market rate. And in that case, the residents are permanently, uh, relocated off the property at their own expense. The, the, once the HAP contract ends, the property no longer enjoys a federal subsidy. The residents lose much of their federal protection. And so many of these properties have been lost over the years because of the locations in major metropolitan areas and areas where the economies have been strong. It's simply been replaced with, uh, market-grade housing. And of course, some of them have become obsolete. They just get older. And if there isn't an opportunity to do what we're proposing at Woodcrest, then that, the housing is inherently lost through obsolescence.
So thank you.
Council, I will say that. I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor. I will say that over the.
No, go ahead.
I, I will say that over the years, I think the council is fully aware of the struggles we've had with affordable housing. Unfortunately, um, in past, in more recent past housing markets, it's this particular population that has the absolute hardest time finding quality, affordable housing. So, um, to lose this sort of housing for this particular population would be, um, would be devastating for those families, but then have to find, uh, new locations to live.
Yeah. Agreed. Um, but see, uh, uh, so basically, is we're, we're giving it, we're, we're extending the life of it. Uh, we're talking, what, another fifty years at, at minimum?
It's cer- certainly forty would be the idea, that the physical structure being brand-new would last forty years. HUD will extend the rental subsidy right off the get-go, once the property's complete, for another twenty years. So on the, on the rental subsidy, we're guaranteed another twenty years as part of this redevelopment.
That is good. Looks good. Uh, any more questions for Bill? Sir, we thank you. Michael, very good.
Thank you.
You know, any, no, uh, no more business. Thank, thanks very much, sir. This, uh, works. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and, and.
I'll make, I'll second.
I'm not here, but. Do you have a motion second?
Don't move, Tavi, here.
Grimaldo, is it noted that we had a motion and a second? I did not hear it.
We just, we, uh, we have a first and a second.
Okay, so we do have a motion in a second. Uh, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed by raising your hand in the same, uh, action. The motion passed. We are adjourned. Everyone have a great, great, uh, week. We will see you next Tuesday.